Good morning, everyone. Good morning and thank you for coming this snowy, beautiful day. I call to order the County Placer Board of Supervisors meeting for Tuesday, October 23rd, at 9:02 a.m. We'll begin this morning with the flag salute led by Supervisor Wiegand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are we okay, Clerk of the Board?
Uh, it's not going, but I can do the meeting procedures.
Okay, we'll start now with the statement of meeting procedures read by our Clerk of the Board, Anne Holman.
Welcome to the Placer County Board of Supervisors meeting of Tuesday, October 23rd, 2012. Agendas are available in the back of this meeting room. If you are here to speak on an issue not appearing on the agenda, you may do so during the public comment period. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker. The Board is not permitted to take action on items addressed under public comment. When you speak, clearly state your name and address for the record. All items on the agenda will be open for the public to address before final action is taken. There's a three-minute time limit per speaker, which will be monitored by a timer on the podium. If there is a person speaking on behalf of a group with no other testimony from another member of the group, please identify yourself as such and your time may be extended at the pleasure of the Board. Keep in mind that the Chairman has discretion of limiting the total discussion time on any item. If you are hearing impaired, we have listening devices available. It is requested that all pagers be either turned off and cell phones be either turned off or put in the silent mode. Thank you for your participation and cooperation.
Thank you, Anne. At this time, we do have the opportunity for public comment. This is intended for public comment on any item not on today's agenda. Your time will be limited to three minutes. If you would like to come forward and identify yourself if you have public comment on any item not on today's agenda, today is your oppor-- right now is your opportunity. Would anyone like to come forward? Yes, Bill?
Oh, first, my name is Bill Farren. I am president of the Squaw Valley Association. And the reason I'm here today is to give you an update on the utilization of the country. If you recall, uh, okay. If you recall, we started this past three years ago with Vicki and I at First Great Squaw Valley Park to create a new historical institution, a museum that will be dedicated to the history and legacy of the 1960 Olympics and the history and legacy of all those stories in the area that has been deep back to 1800.
Okay. Let's try again. Oh, my. So, oh, I'll stand back a little. So, the reason for the update today is to say that we're still alive and well. We've been working very hard the last year and a half behind the scenes to reevaluate what we proposed in 2010. And we have a new revised concept that we're going to be rolling out and taking out to you, the supervisors, the community, and winter sports enthusiasts, to the whole community to get feedback. And we've come to the conclusion that the Squaw Valley Park is the best place, the only place, that can represent the 1960 Olympics. And so that's really the gist of our proposal. There were a lot of challenges that were raised three years ago. We feel that we've addressed those challenges. And we can lay out a path now that can lead to a successful museum being located at the park without affecting the other amenities and facilities at the park. So, it's just a heads up to say this is coming out and we're going to be meeting with as many of you as we can and people in the community and put it out for feedback. Any questions? We have a whole draft document that's almost ready and we feel we've addressed everything that we can, so.
Thank you, Bill. Any other public comments at this time?
Good morning. Ron Freibis with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. I just wanted to do a follow-up to Bill's comment on this project that, as I'm sure you're all aware, but I want to remind you that you are, that this is one that we have been involved with representing the county for the past four years. And through your approval of $200,000, the Squaw Valley Board has been able to move ahead with this advanced planning. And our direction to that Board was that before there could be any additional funding, which we hope there will be because we value this project enormously, that there had to be the selection of a site, that we had put money forward for all the potential alternatives that could be done, but an agreement had to be reached on a site. And so I think that's where they are now with the documents that they've talked to Jennifer about and will talk with the community and the rest of you about too. So, once we get some nod that we have direction to continue to move ahead, then there might be some additional requests for money. But to this point, we have put forward with your approval $200,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other, any other, any other public comments on items not on today's agenda?
Good morning.
Yikes.
Angela Tati with Placer Arts. And I'm here for two reasons today. I wanted to invite you, though winter has come to Sugar Bowl, on Veterans Day weekend it will still be fall on the western slope. And so Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, November 9th, 10th, and 11th, it's a beautiful time to get out and about and touch communities from Colfax to Granite Bay and Roseville during the Autumn Art Studios Tour. This is, for the public, a $10 ticket for adult, gets you into any one of 55 open artist studios that weekend. And we're in 34 locations. And actually, I was thinking about it, this is the one event that Placer Arts puts on that touches every single supervisory district. And so we're very excited to invite you once again this year. This is the 19th year of the tour and children are absolutely free. It's a very enriching and educational opportunity for the public. And we have lots of people that come year after year from out of county and even some of them spend the night. So, you have your packets in front of you and your tickets, so please join us or share the tickets if you are unavailable. And then the second reason is I simply wanted to report and congratulate the Kings Beach community. Friday, I spent time with Joy and Sarah and nine community members representing the business association. We took a public art tour, which was very inspiring, in the city of Reno. And that community is moving on design elements and ideas for public art amenities in the community, which I think will put Kings Beach in a leadership role. And I'm looking forward to working with that group. Thank you very much and have a great afternoon.
Thank you, Angie. Would anyone else like to speak during public comment on any item not on today's agenda? Sandy?
Greetings. Sandy Evans Hall with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. And as I mentioned yesterday, we are having a transit summit this Friday and it will be at the Truckee Tahoe Airport, their new community building. And we'll be talking about a vision for transit for the whole North Lake Tahoe region. So, I invite you to attend if you can. I also want to welcome you here and thank you for bringing the snow because it's really gotten the phones to ring. And if you could just come up about once a month, that would be great.
Thank you. Any other public comments at this time? All right, seeing none, I'm going to close public comments. Before we get to Supervisors Committee reports, I just wanted to let folks know, I know there are a number of you here who are here specifically for one of our administrative items relating to the Royal Gorge Property Funding Agreement. I'm going to ask the indulgence of my Board that we take that first as our departmental item, so that would probably be before our 9:30 timed item. I know a lot of you have homes to get to and blow some snow. But on the advice of council, even though I don't actually have a direct conflict with this, I am actually going to be abstaining from the vote, just so there's no perception as to whether or not I would have any economic benefit from this action. So, I'm going to ask Supervisor Holmes, who is the Vice Chair, to take over on that item and then we'll just get back to the regular meeting process. So, just as a heads up. At this time, I will move to Supervisor Committee Reports. Jack, anything? Supervisor Holmes? Supervisor Wiegand? No fishing report?
No.
Okay, just checking.
It would take too long.
It would take too long, how dare. Okay, so we will go to our consent item. All items on the consent agenda, items 11 through 19, have been recommended for approval by the County Executive Department. All items will be approved by a single roll call vote. However, anyone may ask to address consent items prior to the Board taking action and any item on consent may be moved for discussion either by a member of our Board or a member of the public. Is there anyone who would like to pull anything from consent at this time for additional discussion? All right, seeing none, this will be a roll call. Anne?
Move approval of consent.
Oh, sorry. I'm ahead of myself today. Thank you. We have a motion and a second?
Duran?
Yes.
Wiegand?
Montgomery.
Yes, thank you. Okay, so it being before our 9:30 timed item, I'm going to turn the gavel over to Supervisor Holmes and we will move to item number eight under our department items. This is the Facility Services item.
Good morning. Mark Wrightout, Facility Services. Very pleased to be here today to talk about the Royal Gorge Property Acquisition and the county's funding support for that project. There are several actions that we'll recommend your Board take today. The first is to approve a contribution of $300,000 from Park Dedication Fee Recreation Area 16, which is the Serene Lakes area. And this will assist Truckee Donner Land Trust with their fetal acquisition of almost 3,000 acres of the Royal Gorge Property in Sarasota Springs. The second is to adopt a resolution that will let us complete that action. It authorizes the Director of Facility Services or his designee to negotiate, execute, and record a funding agreement, and to take all other actions necessary to facilitate the transaction and implement the provisions of this agreement. Third and final action today is to approve a budget revision, which appropriates the $300,000. And this will be put into the Parks and Grounds operating budget from the Recreation Area 16. There's no net county cost associated with this project. It's a very exciting partnership between the Trust for Public Lands, the Truckee Donner Land Trust, the Northern Sierra Partnership, and a multitude of nonprofit and private donors that have brought this project together. It's about 2,900 acres of property crossing the Placer and Nevada County line in Sarasota Springs. And it's going to permanently protect resources and opportunities for recreation in an area that the public hasn't been able to access for 50 years. Royal Gorge has operated during the winter as a ski resort and in the summertime it's been closed to public access. The other very exciting thing about this piece of property is it contains about three miles of the historic route of the Overland Immigrant Trail that the Donner Party and other groups traversed in the 1800s. And the Parks Division and other people in the county have been long excited about the prospect of a potential trail that could recreate an experience of that so people can come and see what it might have been like back in those days. The agreement, it's a $10.5 million purchase price and escrow is going to close on the 20th of December. There are some other details to the transaction. Piece is perhaps going to be sold to the United States Forest Service as they would like to protect the Lake Van Norden Meadows and Lake Van Norden itself. We were approached by Truckee Donner Land Trust in the summer. They've made several presentations to the local community, the Serene Lake MAC, the Parks Commission, and ultimately both of those bodies recommended that your Board take this action today. Some of the things that we're going to be working on in the funding agreement are to document the commitment that Truckee Donner Land Trust is going to make to the county. Ultimately, we'll have a 50-foot wide easement if that trail goes forward, which would permit this public access to the property. And the county is going to be involved in the plan for recreation to the property to ensure that it can be enjoyed by the public. So, staff's going to continue working with the land trust in that way. I'm available for questions and there are a number of supporters in the audience today as well.
Any questions from the Board? Is there anyone from the audience that'd like to address this item? All righty, well. Yeah, now's the time to come forward.
Good morning. My name is Bill Odegeast. I'm from Serene Lakes. We are very much for your vote on this. Our little community has pledged $3 million and we're well on our way to getting to that $3 million within the next couple of weeks. What you're looking at here is an extraordinary piece of land. You have extraordinary biological diversity, recreational opportunities, and it's the history. Recreational opportunities are obvious. You have cross-country skiing and mountain biking and hiking and walking and lepidoptery and photography and other things. The biological diversity is amazing. There are 116 species of butterflies on Donner Summit. There are 16 species of amphibians, over 100 species of birds, many dozens of species of mammals. Some of those species are special status species. This is a really important piece of property to allow the public to have access to, to enjoy all of that. But it's really the history that sets this apart. The history of Van Norden Meadow or Summit Valley is extraordinary. You have the first wagons ever to reach California came right through Summit Valley. The first transcontinental railroad came right through Summit Valley. The first transcontinental highway came right through Summit Valley. The first transcontinental air route went right over Summit Valley with beacons placed all along the peaks around the sides of Summit Valley. Native Americans have been traveling the route and using Summit Valley for thousands of years and left their evidence there. And since we're very much sure that we're going to make our goal here by December 20th, we spent a lot of time out in Summit Valley this summer cataloging and exploring. There are dozens of grinding rock sites where there are mortars, some of which have been ground into the granite four or five inches deep. Imagine the time it takes to grind that far into granite and you're just grinding pine nuts or something soft like that. There are matattis, which are wide grinding areas. There are cupules. There are petroglyphs. There is the original Dutch Flat Wagon Road, which I always thought was the dirt road that runs along the side. It's out in the middle of the meadow and had been covered by water until 1976. And there is a gorgeous piece of the old immigrant trail where you can still see where the wagons went. This is an extraordinary opportunity. There is nothing else like it and we in Serene Lakes urge your vote for this. Thank you.
Good morning. Dan Waxler. I'm a member of the Donner Summit Municipal Advisory Council and I'm a former president of the Donner Summit Area Association. As part of the Donner Summit Area Association, we've looked for ways to spend these particular funds, this mitigation funds, for quite a few years now. And due to the climate and other logistical difficulties, it's been very difficult to identify a place to spend these funds up here. And they've been sitting and languishing for a number of years. And the community, in the meantime, over the past few years, has done a number of professional surveys to identify the things that this community would like to spend money on and would like to see improved in this area. And the number one item was open space access, trails, hiking, which are directly addressed by this particular proposal. So, we would like to speak strongly in favor of this funding agreement, both as for the community organizations. Bill represents other community organizations. Every community organization I'm aware of up here supports this particular project. The Donner Summit Municipal Advisory Council held a special meeting last October and voted unanimously to allocate the funds for this particular project. So, you know, I strongly urge the council to vote in favor of this and thank you very much.
Anyone else want to address the Board on this? Any more comments from Board members? This sounds like an absolutely phenomenal project. I'm pleased that the county has the opportunity to partner with all of the land trusts and those that are participating in this and look forward to coming up here when the weather's warm and check it out myself. So, at this time, the Board will entertain a motion.
I'll move a recommendation of staff, staff's recommendation, which include the approval of a contribution of $300,000 from District Area 16, a resolution that authorizes the Director of Facilities to negotiate and execute all the necessary documents and the budget revision necessary to appropriate the $300,000 to the Parks and Grounds operating budget.
Second. Okay, it's been moved and seconded to proceed with this. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. The motion is passed. Congratulations.
I need to go on record as abstaining.
It's a roll call.
Yes.
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Abstaining.
Thank you.
Thank you all for coming. Very much appreciated on this lovely day. And again, feel free to get home to your snowblowing because I know there's a lot of that in everybody's future today. And tomorrow, apparently. All right, we're still short of 9:30, which is our first timed item. So, at this time, we will move to departmental item five, Administrative Services. We're being asked to award a purchase order for Public Works and renew some blanket purchase orders.
Good morning, Supervisors. Brett Wood with Purchasing Department. At this time, I'm joined with John Manning and I'll turn the presentation for the snowblowers over to him.
Good morning. I'm here to request your approval of item number 5A on today's agenda, which is a recommendation to approve the award of a negotiated purchase order to Snowquip Incorporated of West Sacramento for the purchase of two Leroux T-70 self-propelled snowblowers. The Department of Public Works Fleet Services Division submitted a request to purchase two self-propelled snowblowers on behalf of the Road Maintenance Division. The snowblowers are identified on the fiscal year 2012-13 Master Fixed Asset List for the Department of Public Works Fleet Services Division in the total budgeted amount of $1,200,000. Purchasing Policy Manual, Section 7.1, allows the county to negotiate the purchase of new or used vehicles or heavy equipment when deemed beneficial by the requesting department and the purchasing agent, so long as written offers are sent to at least three vendors. Staff obtained three written offers for similarly sized snowblowers and determined that the Leroux snowblowers offered by Snowquip Incorporated were the best value and successfully met the department's operational requirements. Leroux snowblowers are exclusively available from their west coast distributor, Snowquip Incorporated. Purchasing Policy Manual, Section 1.3N, also allows for an exception to the competitive bidding process when the purchasing agent determines that making a specific purchase without competitive bidding is reasonably necessary for the conduct of county business. It is estimated that the county will save approximately $57,647 by purchasing these snowblowers from Snowquip Incorporated. With your approval, a purchase order will be awarded in the total amount of $1,079,791.73, including sales tax and California tire fees. This concludes my request and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
You said that there was an exception to the normal practice of competitive bidding. What was the exception here?
The exception is the fact that there are a limited number of snowblower suppliers in the northern California region and it was determined that sending out a competitive bid would not generate sufficient competition.
Okay.
Any other questions from the Board? Any questions or comments from any member of the public on this? All right, seeing none, what's the pleasure of the Board? Been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move to department item 5B.
Good morning again, Commissioners, Supervisors. Item 5B is a request to renew the competitively awarded blanket purchase orders for JCPaper, Staples Advantage, Unipac Corporation, and United Textile for janitorial supplies for facilities, probation, and Sheriff's Office for 2012-2013 in a maximum amount of $368,000. These BPOs would run, or the blanket purchase orders would run from October 23rd through September 30th of next year. As a matter of history for you, we bid these out last year and awarded five different vendors. At this time, we're requesting renewal of four of them and we've actually reduced the amount through, you know, some appropriate awareness of the products that we need and some judicious use of those. We've brought the amount down from $411,000 last year to $368 at this time. With that, happy to stand for any questions you might have.
Questions or comments from the Board? Any member of the public? What's the pleasure of the Board? It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Brett, thank you very much. All right, still being somewhat short of 9:30, we will move to item six, Community Development Resource Agency. It says Tom Wagner, but I'm pretty sure it's Tim. And unless you have a brother, I'm not aware of.
No, I do not.
This is the repeal and replace Placer County Code, Chapter 15, Article 15.12, Liquid Petroleum Gas. Tim, welcome.
Well, thank you and good morning, Chairman Montgomery, members of the Board. I'm Tim Wagner, your Chief Building Official here for Placer County, and I want to thank you for the opportunity to introduce today an ordinance that repeals and replaces an existing article of county code. The ordinance before your Board today replaces the county's existing high country liquid petroleum gas standards found in Article 1512 of county code. These provisions, for your consideration, establish best management practices for the safe and reliable conveyance of liquid petroleum gas, or better known as LPG, in the county's high country. As you may remember all too well, the winter of 2010 and 2011 was one where snow fell, reaching record levels here in the high country. Excuse me. In spite of the county's previous efforts in 1982 to develop similar standards enabling LPG systems withstand such snowfall, the particular winter proved too much for these systems where approximately 50 residential propane leaks occurred and one home exploded from due to the leaking propane. Leaking propane is never a good thing. In an effort to ensure these type of incidents don't occur again in the county, I'm proposing to your Board today an ordinance that develops standards addressing identified areas of concerns with LPG systems in high snow areas here within the county. Because liquid petroleum gas is complex and because LPG systems are widely used in the county's high country, the proposed ordinance was developed through the efforts of a Placer County LPG focus group. The group was comprised of the county's building official, a representative of each of the four fire districts or departments in the county's high country, that's including Truckee, North Tahoe, Squaw Valley, and Norstar, a representative of the Western Propane Association, a representative of the Contractors Association of Truckee Tahoe, and a representative of the Serene Lakes Properties Owners Station, all were involved. The focus group met three times in Tahoe, followed by a stakeholders' meeting in Tahoe on September 21st of this year. The proposed ordinance has received positive, encouraging votes of confidence that this effort best serves the LPG systems in the county's high country. In general, I'd just like to capture a few of the areas that have changed and this includes six basic elements. First, the refinement of terms in providing clarity to these standards. Two, clarification of piping construction standards. Three, the acceptance, excuse me, acceptance of technological solutions such as flexible risers, potentially aiding in pipe construction concerns. Four, clarification of tank location standards, including snow stake warning and stake identifier markings. Five, the establishment of an annual inspection program with what I term a quasi licensure program. The reason I term this a quasi licensure program, there's no annual fee that's charged for this and really a sticker's affixed to the tank, really identifying which vendors provided the annual inspection, which person from that vending company has provided, which staff member and on the date in which they provided this. This is all furnished through the local fire districts and departments, the stickers and the method in which this is approached. And this way, we can be sure that tanks are not filled unnecessarily and that safety repairs are made in the future. And any clarification, and six, excuse me, clarification of enforcement standards where you should know, the local fire departments and districts will continue their issue, to issue permits and conduct inspections of these LPG systems as they have in the past. And the county's only enforcement continues to be the restriction of building permits, issuance of building permits, where these systems may not be compliant with county code. Currently, there's a section in county code that does require the building department to ensure that each of these entities, including the fire district, have gone through the programmatic approach and making sure that the fire code elements have been approved. And so this is a method that we will use to ensure that these LPG systems are safe. I'm confident the proposal provides a much-needed clarification. I'm confident the proposal provides a much-needed clarification, technical standards, and processes ensuring the safe and reliable conveyance of LPG in Placer County's high country, and for this reason, recommend your board's approval today. Before closing and opening for questions, I want to personally thank those who assisted the county in this important matter. Without them, we wouldn't have been able to put together such a comprehensive safety package. Today, we developed standards that will set a new safety bar for LPG systems, potentially here in Placer County and across the US. With that, I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Supervisor Duran.
Yes, I have one question. Page 2, 15.12.030, requirements for LPG installations. If you go down to Item C and then go to the last, beginning of the last sentence, it says an approved gas shut-off valve. Is that industry standard? Is that state? Is that federal? Is that county?
So, 1512.030, Section C?
Down at the bottom, yeah.
Oh, an approved gas shut-off valve should have been installed in, yes. Gas shut-off valves are actually demonstrated through the plumbing, through the plumbing mechanical, and even the fire code will require that it be an approved listed device. So we would, sir, be looking for that type of a device.
Any other questions from the board? Before I open it up to the public for any questions, I did want to read an email that I received yesterday, Chief Pete Benson from Squaw Valley, was not going to be able to be here today, but he wanted to let people know, and I'm quoting his email. "Tim has been an asset to Placer County with the propane ordinance. Tim made sure that the process to revise the county's ordinance was an inclusive and open discussion involving the LPG industry, residents of the affected areas, and fire service representatives from Truckee, North Tahoe, North Star, and Squaw Valley. His attention to detail, persistence, and personal involvement were critical to arriving at an ordinance that addresses the issues, is totally workable, and is beneficial to all parties." I really wanted to read that out, because I know that this was a great deal of work for you, and it was a highly contentious issue, as they so often are, but as a resident of, you know, the above 5,000 feet who are impacted by this, I want to thank you for all your efforts and your outreach, because I think what we have is something that is going to make the community and our first responders, frankly, very much safer. So, thanks. Any members of the public want to comment on this at this time? All right, seeing none, I will bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any objections? Any abstentions? Motion carries, thank you very much. We will move at this time to our 9:30 item, our timed item. This is a Public Works item, Kings Beach Benefit Assessment District, Number 1. Peter Krass presenting. Okay.
Good morning again, Chairwoman. Is that on?
Good morning again, Chairwoman. Members of the board. Peter Krass with Public Works, Deputy Director of our Engineering Division up here in Lake Tahoe, here to present the 9:30 timed item. We have a PowerPoint for everyone to review. My job today is to walk you and the public through this detailed item, including conducting a public hearing and requesting adoption of a resolution to information, to the formation of Kings Beach Benefit District Number 1. I will walk you through district benefits, district costs, determination, determination of district costs, public outreach on the proposed district, important district details, and the process related to the actions presented to your board for consideration today. My presentation will somewhat be a reader's digest of the actions before you, but I will attempt to make sure everyone fully understands what we are asking today. It's a very detailed item, we've come a long way on this, and so there's a lot here, and I will boil it down to what I think is important for everyone to understand with this item. The highlighted goals are what this item is all about in yellow, making sure that once we build the project, there's a program in place to uniformly and consistently maintain streetscape improvements, with particular emphasis on the sidewalks that are proposed for the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. I think some of you have seen this before in previous presentations, but just wanted to remind folks of what the proposed streetscape improvements look like, and what I believe the community once maintained when we build this project. Obviously, up in the upper left, existing conditions of what we see today, and what a part of the core will look like when we build our streetscape improvements. Again, just to orientate everybody here today, the board and the public, this slide shows proposed district boundaries, which shows the district generally straddles Highway 28 and properties on each side from Highway 267 East to Chipmunk Street, in, of course, the community of Kings Beach. Okay, so a lot of verbiage on this slide, but it's important to explain the proposed district benefits that, as you can see, can be divided into eight activities through cost sharing on a fair and equitable basis. The first four activities, I don't have them numbered, these four, represent what folks will regularly see for maintaining pedestrian mobility and access throughout the year, along with maintaining streetscape aesthetics, including snow management of sidewalks, trash removal, sidewalk cleaning, and landscape maintenance. The remaining activities, the lower four, 1, 2, 3, 4, relate to repairs, operating reserve, administration fees, and building up a capital replacement fund. By and large, the predominant benefit or maintenance activity is snow removal of sidewalks at over 60% of the annual estimated district budget at $105,000. What's also important out, to point out here, is that these activities relate to, in part, how properties were evaluated for assessment amounts. In summary, benefit points were determined for each parcel in the district, divided into three benefit categories. Number 1, aesthetic. Number 2, safety. And number 3, economic activity. Ultimately, maintenance of streetscape improvements will ensure the enhanced livability of the community initially provided by streetscape installation, and this concept is further articulated in the Engineers Report that we previously filed with the Clerk of the Board. The report is the centerpiece of detailing what I'm presenting to you today, and showing what I believe is an equitable assessment amount for each parcel in the district. Section 5 of that report goes into further identification of benefits and highlights the importance of the project's street design and maintaining it, as it is inclusive of all modes of transportation, which represents a proven record for revitalization in other All right, so moving on to our annual district budget. This slide takes the eight activities I just talked about of the proposed district and provides the annual budget affiliated with each one. As you can see, snow management, snow hauling, and snow storage represent the bulk of the budget. The other important point on this slide is that the gross budget is just over $201,000, right there. But as explained in the Engineers Report filed with the Clerk of the Board, there is a general benefit associated with the proposed district activities, which relates to benefits provided to the public at large outside the district. And so the net cost to district property owners representing special benefits is less at just over $166,000. The general benefit credit of $35,000 also includes additional contributions from the county and the North Tahoe Public Utility District, provided by snow management of the public parking lots in the district, and snow storage to be provided on North Tahoe Public Utility District property. May be hard to see here, but I think this is a good graphical illustration of the assessment breakdown across the district, and how a cost is assigned to each parcel. What you see here is a per parcel cost range of tens of dollars per year for some parcels, up to over $2,500 a year for other parcels. And just to orientate you a little bit, the light brown on the larger parcels you see here, those are the ones that are typically assessed over $2,500, as shown in the legend. Two ones that are just in the tens of dollars, for instance, represented by the Sweetfire condominium property over here on the west side. So you see, you see that range illustrated across the whole district area in terms of cost per parcel assigned to each property. And I should say that the Engineers Report fully details how benefits are determined for each parcel and the corresponding assessment cost. The higher the benefits receive, the higher the assessment. And benefits are based on linear frontage in relation to streetscape improvements, along with parcel size, existing development footprint, and land use classification. And speaking of land use classification, our next slide, break down the land use within the district, which shows predominant non-residential zoning in green, along with some residential zoning and minor recreational zoning. Have that right? That's, yeah, the green is non-residential, which is no surprise, we have a lot of commercial development in this proposed district, and mixed-use development is not unique with respect to other communities pursuing a benefit assessment district program. Evaluation of maintenance funding. So, a little bit of background of how we got here today. In 2011, the North Tahoe Business Association retained NBS, who is a consultant that helps cities and counties across California look at maintenance mechanisms for special benefits, exactly what we're talking about here today. And kind of the three programs that are out there, at least in the state of California, are what's called the Property-Based Improvement District, the Business Improvement District, and the Benefit Assessment District. And community feedback that we received, last year especially, you know, really focused on a honed approach or a lean approach, were really just dealing with the maintenance of these streetscape improvements. The Property-Based Improvement District and the Business Improvement District gets into marketing and special events and funding for those types of things. The community really wanted to really look at just, let's maintain these improvements once they're installed, and that results in a very transparent budget that we have to be accountable for in terms of dollars collected and how they're used for maintaining the district. And really, it came down to the things I've talked about already, but the sidewalk maintenance, making sure it's accessible for the public year-round, trash pickup on the sidewalks, snow management, of course, throughout, to keep the sidewalks clear throughout the year, and landscape maintenance from an aesthetic perspective, to really, once these improvements are installed, they function and they look great for the long haul, that really helps to continue to spur economic revitalization and spur business growth and success in Kings Beach. All right, moving on to public outreach. Talked a little bit about that in the previous slide, but throughout our project, if I go way back in time to the early 2000s, and, but I'll say most, currently 2007 to the present, we took the opportunity, as Public Works being the lead agency on this project, to brief the community on the expectation that this multimillion-dollar investment by Placer County should be maintained by the benefiting properties. That truly is a special benefit. It's not something we do in Placer County with sidewalk maintenance. We take care of the roads, we'll continue to take care of the roads in Kings Beach. Caltrans will continue to take care of the highway, but the sidewalks are what are considered a special benefit, when we start talking about Proposition 218 law and things of that nature. The North Tahoe Business Association conducted a series of stakeholder meetings, and smaller focus meetings in the spring of 2011, discussed the various methods of assessments and payment options. And about that time, that's when they retained NBS, this consultant that assisted in outreach and information to the community on what it would take to form a district. And then in December 2011, public meetings were held focusing on community, the community preferred method of assessment, really, which was the Benefit Assessment District, which I talked about previously, which is really focused just on the maintenance of these improvements installed. Talked about parcel assessment costs, how the cost estimates were, would be assessed per parcel, the district formation process and balloting procedures, and then establishment of an assessment. Then, fast forward to 2012, the North Tahoe Business Association conducted polling surveys this summer of proposed district property owners and/or the tenants in those properties to determine the potential level of support for forming the district. And I would say, we wouldn't probably be here today if that informal polling that occurred, you know, came back and said to us that there was, a lot of folks favored the formation of the district. Now, I know if we go forward after today, and we issue ballots, and people have to respond to those ballots, we could get a different response, but right now, the informal polling makes it so, it makes sense to move forward on this item. A couple other things on public outreach. Back in May, we sent a mailer to all the proposed property owners about what this was all about, about potential assessment costs to their property. And then just most recently, this month in October, we sent a second mailer describing what we were going to do today, and issue the Engineers Report, which we got online about a week and a half ago, and then, as required by Prop 218 law, public notices were sent out to this month in the papers to let folks know about what was happening today. All right, a little bit more information here. District details, and this is important just to talk about some of the things that have come up as we've looked at, you know, how this is formed, and some of the, some of the numbers here. First of all, Public Works, we would manage the district if formed. A little bit about, you know, most of the work that we're talking about here in the maintenance is custodial work, that we would work through our Procurement Services Division, Administrative Services, and we would work through a low-bid process with a local vendor preference, and the way we understand state law today, prevailing wage would not be, would not apply in this situation, because it's considered custodial work. In fact, the costs that we came up for our district budget were based on talking to local contractors that do this type of work in the community. So, we hope that down the line, if this thing passes, that state law doesn't change and prevailing wage becomes a requirement. The way we understand it now, in talking to our Administrative Services folks, it's custodial work, where prevailing wage would not be required. The assessment timing, this has come up many times. Okay, so we're trying to form this district before we break ground on the project next year. We've always said, and the way it's written in our proposed resolution to you, that no assessment would occur on any property until the improvements are installed, the streetscape improvements are installed. No district properties are exempt from payment. We have a mix of private properties, as you can imagine, we have state properties along the south side of highway, south side of the highway with the state beach, and I don't think we have federal properties, but we have a number of state properties, and we have county properties. All are treated the same in terms of being assessed for the special benefits they would receive, be received from this proposed district. There are 294 total parcels in the proposed district, 40 are zone residential. Of those 294 parcels, 171 parcel owners live within the district, 65 live within the Tahoe Basin, and 106 live outside the Tahoe Basin, just to give you an idea of where the property ownership, where those folks live. The property assessment per owner breakdown is as follows. So this is not the parcel breakdown, because there are owners of multiple parcels. So, the maximum we see is $16,442 and some change per year, and that's a number of parcels owned by BB LLC towards the center of the commercial core. The minimum is $13.13 a year, which would be paid by a condominium owner on the west side of the district. The average per owner cost would be $967.75 a year. The median is at $436.22, and there are 173 individual parcel owners that control or own the 294 total parcels, parcels, with 72 of those within, just within the seven, within what's called the Sweetfire condominium complex, which is on the west side of Kings Beach. So, a lot of information there for you to see. And finally, really getting down to the meat and potatoes of today's item, the district formation process. So today's actions, we are asking for your board today, and what will, and I'll highlight what will happen in the future, should you adopt the resolution before you, following the completion of the public hearing. And I want to read through these pretty, you know, word by word, so we all know where we're going here. Today, we're asking you to conduct a public hearing and adopt the resolution before you related to formation of Kings Beach Benefit Assessment District Number 1. We're also asking to approve the assessment Engineers Report filed with the Clerk of the Board. We're asking you to authorize issuing some ballots to district property owners and set a public hearing date of January 22nd, 2013, to tabulate the ballots, finalize the formation of the district, and consider levying assessments. Through all the above summarized actions and what's written in our resolution today, the county is strictly complying with the procedures specified in Article 13D of the California Constitution and Proposition 218 law. All of this is, if all these actions are approved today, ballots would then be prepared by Public Works and mailed to each property owner, and they must be received at least 45 days prior to the January 22nd, 2013 scheduled public hearing, in accordance with Proposition 218 law. Returned assessment ballots received prior to the close of the public hearing on January 22nd, 2013 would be tabulated, weighted by the proposed assessment amount, and results announced by the Board of Supervisors on January 22nd, 2013. If 50% or more of returned weighted ballots are in favor of forming the district, the Board of Supervisors may approve district formation and levy assessments. And I think one thing to point out in all of my presentation today is that it's not one person or one property or in one vote, it's, votes are, considered votes like dollars. So if I have a $2,500 assessed property, I have 2,500 votes. The guy next door that's $150, he has $150, 150 votes. And so it's a weighted ballot approach. It's exactly how Proposition 218 works for forming Benefit Assessment District. So I hope that's clear to your board, and I hope it's clear to the public, and I'll stand here for questions at this point in time. Thank you for your time and indulgence.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate that presentation. Before I open the public hearing, I'm just going to check and see...
So, if I have a $2,500 assessed property, I have 2,500 votes. The guy next door that's $150, he has $150, 150 votes. And so, it's a weighted ballot approach. It's exactly how Proposition 218 works for forming Benefit Assessment Districts. So, I hope that's clear to your board, and I hope it's clear to the public, and I'll stand here for questions at this point in time. Thank you for your time and indulgence.
Thank you, Peter. Appreciate that presentation. Before I open the public hearing, I'm just going to check and see if there's any questions or clarifications from my board. All right, seeing none. The first thing we are being asked to do here is to conduct a public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing on the item that Peter just presented, and open it up to the public for any questions and comments. If you would like to comment on this, please come forward to the podium and the microphone and identify yourself.
Ellie Waller, excuse me, Tahoe Vista resident. How does this compare to the Tahoe City Assessment District, and do you believe as a board that that has been a successful program? I'm curious if there's any enforcement process problems with that current program, and is there an actual process for enforcement? And with the current community plan process going on, if a parcel is reclassified, how will you adjust the assessment? Thank you.
Any other comments or questions? Now is the time to come forward.
Hi, John Burvet. Good morning, all. One of my, I represented, or I polled about 110 owners along this section with the sidewalk. Mostly three homeowners associations, two of them involving the Sweetbrier Project and one of them involving Edge Lake. Edge Lake represents about 2,700 people, and then several other highway owners, including myself. And they all had a positive, go-forward, positive vote for an assessment district. But there was an overriding couple of concerns. Peter just covered one of them, and that was prevailing wage. I'm glad that's out of the way. The other issue that came up was insurance. I can't get a clear answer on who actually is going to carry the liability insurance for the sidewalks. And then there's this issue, kind of my issue, of who clears between the five-foot slot, say, on example of a 17-foot sidewalk, from the five-foot slot out to the parking space that could be another 15 feet? Who clears that path to allow the person parking to, up to the storefront? And my last point is of big disappointment that we couldn't have investigated geothermal more carefully and more aggressively to heat these sidewalks. Thank you.
My name's Steve Miller. I own a home on the lake, and I also own a piece of property on the commercial corridor which I plan to develop over the course of the next year and a half. With a significant investment and the time and energy that the county is going to put forward, I think it would be a mistake not to put a plan in place at the beginning to upkeep and in light of today and looking at the parking, making sure we do have proper snow removal, not only from a safety perspective, just to encourage business in the winter. If you walk down the sidewalks right now, it can be a little, a little harrowing at this point. So, I do fall on the, on the upper end, even without my property being developed, I'm already on the upper end of the, of the tax scale. I have no problem with this. I've spoken with multiple different business owners and property owners around, and like the gentleman said before, there's been kind of an overwhelming support to go ahead and support this business assessment, business assessment district. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miller. Any other comments or questions on this? This is a public hearing. Please come forward.
Yeah, I just want to know why Sweetbrier's so cheap. No, I'm just kidding. I, I think we've, we've pretty much beat this thing pretty much to death for a lot of years, and I think we're, pardon? Dave Ferrari, Kings Beach. Yeah, no, not, not quite. But we are, our family is, is in favor of this. We agree with the last gentleman that, you know, we need to take care of the sidewalks, we need to do the snow removal, we need to get all that done. I, I think, I've been involved in this process, and we, for quite a while, we were really going down the P-Bid idea, which seemed really difficult and almost impossible to do. And I think this Benefit Assessment District is a much fairer and cheaper and easier thing to do, and I think this will work pretty good. I would also add that, not just, I think most of the residents in Kings Beach are in favor of this, but I think our guests that have come, we've got a number of guests now over 50 years, over 40 years, they're asking every year, like, when are we getting sidewalks? And I just, it came, the four-lane highway in Kings Beach really hit home to us and the danger of it this summer in July when we had a rollover accident right in front of the Crown at about 7:30 at night. Very extremely loud collision, young man that was coming home after working a double shift at a new bakery, his family to open an incline, fell asleep. Across the road, I'm not sure the details of it, but he hit, hit an SUV that rolled over on its side, and then he continued on into the takeout window at Peluso's Pizza. And I gotta say, of all the nights like in July that nobody was standing at that takeout window, this just happened to be one of them. And the fact that there were no pedestrians hit or killed or even any of our guests, but I just, it cast a pallor over our, over our guests for a couple of days, the people that were there, because it was so loud and just, you know, everybody ran, came right out of their rooms, look up, and you see this SUV there with the tires spinning. And so, I just think the time has come, and a lot of people have been injured, lost their lives out there. The guy that owns Peluso's Pizza, his son had been hit by a car the year before, two years before, so. Anyway, I think it's, it's high time. We just saw what, what three lanes looked like in Tahoe Vista, looks great, and I don't think it's messed with traffic, it's been really good. So, anyway, we support this. We would like the county also to look at the process of development moving forward too, for people to improve their businesses, remodel them, rebuild, that the process through Placer County become streamlined, just in the sense that the different departments work together and that, you know, once you get a permit and once you're moving forward, that you can feel like you're going to move forward and not all of a sudden, oh, well, what about this and what about that? And I really hope that we can work on that level at all so that we see some redevelopment. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments at this time? This is a public hearing, this is your opportunity to comment on this item.
Good morning. Joy Doyle. I'm the Executive Director of the North Tahoe Business Association, and Peter did a fabulous job with the involvement of the North Tahoe Business Association in the formation of the Benefit Assessment District through many, many years. And I'd like to congratulate Peter and Dan and the Department of Public Works in general for their efforts on this project. It is commendable what you all have done, so thank you very much. And I'd also like to urge, of course, the Board of Supervisors to support the formation of the district in Kings Beach. We have received several letters, which I have submitted into the record from North Tahoe Business Association members, so let those be noted, and there are several of our members here speaking in favor of the district. Outside of protecting the lake, this Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, one of the main purposes of it is to make sure that Kings Beach is walkable and safe and welcoming. And those are some of what I would consider to be some of the basic needs that need to be met in any community that clearly aren't being met. Great points made by Dave Ferrari about safety. I feel like in a lot of areas, people don't even come into our business community because they fear for their safety. Getting off topic a little bit, the Benefit Assessment District ensures that the $45 million improvements are properly and fairly maintained, and it's essential to Kings Beach to becoming walkable, welcoming, and a safe place not only to visit but to spend money. The formation of the Kings Beach Benefit Assessment District allows for the much-needed improvements to be properly and fairly maintained by the property owners and business owners. These are the people who benefit most by the improvements. And just to step back and do a little analogy here, if you take the total district cost and divide it by the 1.1 mile of the commercial core, the cost works out to be about $40 per linear foot to maintain the improvements. And that's like basically having somebody park a brand-new Ferrari or Lamborghini in your driveway and say, here you go, it's our gift to you, now all you have to do is maintain it. So, I really urge the supporting of the formation of a Benefit Assessment District, and thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this at this time? This is a public hearing, this is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing and bring this back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board on this? Or any other discussion before we move to that? Jack? All right, we have a motion and a second, and I'm assuming that is Item 1A, Items A, B, C, and D. Okay? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you, Peter. Thank you for coming as well, appreciate it. All right. It being 10:03, we will move to our 10 o'clock timed item. This is a Community Development Resource Agency item, engineering and facility services as well as county executive and emergency services relating to the American Vineyard Village project in the west end of Placer County. Chuck Grant presenting.
I'll try. Oh, okay, thank you. Yes, Chuck Grant, Community Development Resource Agency. Good morning. The item before you presently is the approval of two final maps for the American Vineyard Village subdivision. These two maps represent the first two phases of the entitlement and comprise a total of 78 residential units. The conditions of approval have all been satisfied, with the exception of the formation of an entity to fund certain essential services. The services will be provided by the Department of Facility Services and the emergency services, parks and, parks and trail maintenance, and fire and emergency medical services. They'll be funded through two separate county service areas that will be, well, your approval will be requested for their formation as a companion to this item. Before closing, I'm available to answer any questions on the final map approval or any of the conditions that are relevant to that.
Supervisor Durin?
Yeah, I know that this is just an administrative kind of process here, but was the MAC at least, did you present this to the MAC at all?
No, the MAC was engaged prior to the entitlement process. The vesting tentative map and the associated environmental concerns were brought forth before the planning commission approved the tentative map. So, no, the final map did not receive any scrutiny from the MAC.
Okay. All right. What I would do is in the future, I would recommend maybe just an information item to let them know that this is coming before the board.
All right, very good, thank you.
Any other questions or comments from the board?
All right, and I'll turn this over to Mr. Rideout with the Department of Facility Services.
Let me just check and see. Jerry, do we need to take these as individual items?
I think that would be the clearest way to do that.
Okay, let's, let's see what the pleasure of the board then is on Item 2A. All right, it's been made and seconded. All those in favor of adoption of the final maps, Phase 1 and 2, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Great, motion carries. Thank you. We'll now move to Item 2B, annexation of American Vineyard Village into Zone of Benefit 169.
Good morning. Mark Rideout, Facility Services. This is the Parks item to this three-part action. I'd like you to conduct a public hearing, consider protests, tabulate the ballots that I have provided to the clerk, adopt a resolution annexing American Vineyard Village into Zone 169, which is the Dry Creek Park area, and impose a charge for park maintenance, trail maintenance, landscape median maintenance, and the administration and all the other park and trail development services. And this is for the parcels that are or will be a part of the American Vineyard Village project. It's a three-part subdivision, and as this is being funded by the residents of this district, there's no net county cost associated with the action. And just for background, zones are created within the county-wide service area to fill the funding services gap between special services and the general county funding of amenities for our citizens. The Dry Creek Park area zone was developed in 2001 to fund park and recreation facilities in that area. The American Vineyard Village subdivision is approved for 139 units, that's on 19.2 acres. And as alluded to before, not all of those are being constructed in the first two phases, but this charge will cover all of those ultimate lots of build-out. Pursuant to Prop 218, the property owners have signed a ballot approving this charge, which is initially set at $575.28. The interesting thing about this process, previously, there were 973 parcels in this district. The addition of the new 139 American Vineyard brings it now to 1,112 lots. So, the folks who are already out there will actually see their assessment drop by $7.20 per unit because of the additional people and the fixed cost of providing maintenance out there. So, with that, we recommend approval, and I'm available for any questions you might have.
Any questions from my board before I open the public hearing? All right, seeing none. This is a public hearing, this is the opportunity for the public to come and comment on the annexation of American Vineyard Village into Zone of Benefit 169. Is there any member of the public who would like to comment under the public hearing portion? All right, seeing none, I am going to close the public hearing and ask that the clerk tabulate ballots for us.
I have one ballot in favor.
You have one ballot in favor?
Yes.
So, is that 100%?
Yes.
That would be 100%. All right, then we are being asked to adopt a resolution annexing the American Vineyard Village into the Zone of Benefit. What is the pleasure of the board? Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, motion carries. We will now move to Item 2C, annexation of American Vineyard Village into Zone of Benefit 165. Rui Cunha presenting.
Good morning, members of the board. Rui Cunha, County Executive Office. The item before you asks that you conduct a public hearing, consider all protests, tabulate ballots, adopt a resolution annexing American Vineyards Village into Zone of Benefit 165, Dry Creek Fire, and impose a charge to fund fire protection and emergency medical services for all parcels that are or will be created in the American Vineyards Village project. There is no net county cost as a result of this action. Similar to Parks, pursuant to Proposition 218, the owner of record has signed a ballot approving for himself an annual charge of $184.98 per parcel, plus any additional parcels created as a result of the recording of the, of the new map. Additionally, the owner has waived any mailing requirements related to hearing also with this action. The Zone of Benefit 165 was created in 2001, again, similar to Parks. There was an engineering report that was put together as a result of that creation that, at that time in 2001, established a charge of $157 per parcel for each of the developments that annexed into Zone 165. That charge has been subject to a cost escalator over the period of a little over 10 years now to arrive at the current charge of $184.98. Subject, any questions that you might have? I'm here to answer any questions.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, I will open the public hearing at this time. If there's any member of the public who would like to comment or ask any questions on the annexation of American Vineyard Village into Zone of Benefit 165, now is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, I will close the public hearing and ask the clerk of the board to tabulate the ballots for us. You have one ballot? In favor or opposed?
In favor.
In favor? All right, and we're being asked... And we're being asked to adopt a resolution annexing American Vineyard Village into Zone of Benefit 165. What is the pleasure of the board? We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you very much. We will now move to department item 6B, Tahoe Basin Community Plan Update Status. Paul Thompson and Edmund Sullivan presenting.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Paul Thompson with Planning Services. Whenever your board is in, meets in Eastern Placer County, Planning Services is able to provide presentations on the projects that we were working on, and today's first presentation is on the Tahoe Basin Community Plan Update. And here to make that presentation is Edmund Sullivan.
Thank you. Edmund, welcome.
Thank you very much. Thanks, Paul. So as you all know, this community plan effort's been going on for about a year now, various stages, and this is keeping with direction from the board to give periodic updates on where we are with the planning process. And sort of in general, you know, we continue to coordinate with TRPA because they have their parallel process going on with the regional plan update. TRPA releases its RPU actually Thursday and the corresponding EIS, and Placer County has and will continue to provide feedback to TRPA on their plan to ensure consistency between their effort and our effort. In addition, there's, as part of this community plan update process, we have to do a background report on natural resources, land use, sort of, you know, sort of, you know, setting the stage of what current conditions are, and that has been completed by staff, and it's being reviewed by the Technical Advisory Committee, which includes agency people both within the county and outside the county. As you all know, this has been quite a public outreach strategy associated with this community plan effort, and since the last status report to the board on July 24th, there's been two additional community workshops, and they, the working groups, there's, things are split up into four plan areas, and they finalized work with land use and scale, meaning the height of how the business core, the neighborhood centers would move forward, and it's just sort of a conceptual plan at this time, based, you know, coming from the stakeholder groups. There have been five community workshops in total since May of this year. The next workshop is scheduled for November 28th. In addition, we've had these town hall meetings. We had one just last week on October 17th at North Tahoe Event Center in Kings Beach. Signed-in attendance was a hundred exactly. We estimate there was between a hundred and twenty and a hundred and thirty people there, so it was a great turnout. There were, and it was basically to give the public an update on the process, sort of like we're giving the board today. There were a lot of issues raised by the citizens at the meeting, including the team selection process, there were a couple of questions associated with that, scale of Will this process result in real change on the ground? There seems to be consensus amongst people that it's important to protect the view sheds and also lake access. There is some confusion because of all the related planning efforts going on, you have the TRPA, you have Tahoe City, you have the Sustainable Communities process, so there is some confusion from the public, understandably with all these parallel processes going on, and the staff will continue to try to clarify and, you know, explain that, you know, that these different things are all connected but yet independent. There are some challenges. Trust is certainly a challenge, and we believe our outreach strategy is starting to build that trust, which will be critical for plan completion, and getting consensus amongst the various stakeholders. There are two different visions and paths for growth within the community. I think there's a lot of shared sort of positions by people, but there are some differences and staff is working through to try to build consensus on those issues. We will continue to hold regular community workshops through probably next fall, I think that's when they'll stop, and the next step is this is get into design standards or sort of the nuts and bolts of planning and zoning. We will continue to coordinate with TRPA and Sustainable Tahoe and the Tahoe City Visioning process, which is sponsored by the Tahoe City PUD and the Resort Association. And I'll talk to you a little bit about what's going on in Tahoe City. I haven't been directly involved with the visioning process, but I am aware of sort of the specifics. On September 27th, there was a draft vision presented to the public on the Tahoe City commercial core, and that was sort of, the golf course purchase was sort of driving it, but then they took it beyond that, and they're looking at the entire commercial core and how they can revitalize it, mainly from the private infrastructure standpoint and how they can rethink the road circulation, and there are some pretty ambitious drawings that have been created, and it's, we will continue to work with that process, integrating it into the county's process. So no action is required from the board today, and I'm here to address any questions that you have.
Any questions from the board? All right. Edmund, I did have a couple of very quick questions. In terms of the regional plan update, and perhaps this is a question that I should ask to Steve Buellnight at his presentation. My recollection of the regional plan update, which as you indicate is going to be released on Thursday-
Yes.
-for public consumption, and is that they are proposing along the lake shore, along the lakeside of Highway 28, Highway 89, mainly two-story structures with three-story structures along the non-lakeside of those highways. Is that the same direction that the county process is going?
There is, and, you know, I'm the facilitator for the west team, and I'm more familiar with what's going on in the west plan area, but the Carnelian Bay, Tahoe Vista, there were some three-story maximum proposed by the stakeholder group, and I believe it's the same in Tahoe City. I know with the Carnelian Bay, Tahoe Vista group, it was sort of a trade-off, you know, you can go up to three stories if you narrow sort of the footprint of the project. So if you provide better view corridors, you could get a extra story. So somehow you improve access or view of the lake, the group decided that three was acceptable, and there was consensus on that. Within Tahoe City, I know there is some higher than three being proposed, but this is a conceptual process, but there will, there is an inconsistency, yes, based on our effort and what TRPA is proposing.
Okay.
I think, yep, sorry.
And then getting to the Tahoe City Vision process from the PUD and the Resort Association, how does the county intend to fold that into our process, which then gets sort of folded into the RPU process as things move up the chain?
Yeah, that's sort of a working process, yeah. At this point, I know Alan Bruch had been involved in the visioning process, and Crystal and other members of Placer County attended, I think, that meeting on the 27th. And I know it's an ongoing, you know, sort of integration there. I wouldn't say we've gotten there yet, and it will be trying to make sure that, because that's a public process too, to try to make sure these two public processes meet the needs of the community, so.
So do we envision that we'll have maybe a town hall that focuses on how, maybe not the nuts and bolts of our process, but how the Tahoe City Vision process relates to the county process, which relates to the TRPA process? Because I think that's where there's some real confusion.
Yeah, we haven't discussed that yet, but I think that's a very good idea, that we need to probably have some sort of, you know, town hall, at the very least workshop, you know, with the groups and invite the various players. TRPA attends all of the workshops, and they've been very helpful. John Hitchcock and another planner have been attending those meetings, and they've helped a lot with explaining, you know, the nuances of the two processes. But yeah, I think that's a very good idea to have an integration of, you know, workshop and a town hall, probably.
Yeah, and I know that Crystal is sort of the driving force behind this, so if you wouldn't mind taking that suggestion back to Crystal?
Definitely.
I think it would be helpful, because I have heard certainly, maybe confusion is the wrong word, but lack of clarity about how the three different processes may work with each other.
Yes, and Crystal's always explaining that the visioning in Tahoe City, that's not a Placer County-sponsored process, we're a stakeholder in it, so.
Okay.
But yeah, I think that's a very good idea, and I'll pass it on to her.
Thank you.
Sure.
Any questions from the board before I open it to the public? Okay, any member of the public have any comments on this?
Good morning, Ellie Waller, Tahoe Vista resident and member of the North Tahoe-West Community Plan Team. I just want to clarify, we agreed on one property at three stories because of the nature of the property, it's the Marina property, if you're familiar with Tahoe Vista, because it does go down and allow for a view corridor, and possibly Captain John's with the same type of view corridor. The long, narrow properties that Edmund talked about are the ones on the mountainside. Because they are long and narrow, we actually agreed to articulations, starting at two stories at the frontage, and possibly up to four within the maximum height district. That'll be allowed there for some of those properties. We don't want a block of all the properties to look like that, so we're going to look at the articulations by parcel. First guy in's going to probably get the four stories, and we'll have to look at it from a cumulative impact. I also, my comments are related to both the Tahoe Regional Planning presentation that will come up and the community plan process. I attended the last NITRAC meeting and was very surprised to hear the board's discussion on the DOMAS project. One of the NITRAC members says, "This isn't the project I voted for." Another suggested, "It was so poorly done that it should be torn down." What's happened is the detention basin for the water quality treatment facility there was not properly sized for the project, and the parcel is just not designed, so some of the landscape screening is not going to take place the way it was presented to the public, to the NITRAC, to any of these boards, and so there's some public outcry about how that looks. As we're doing this community planning processing, that flat-sided building isn't really articulated. Is this what the regional plan and the county is envisioning at a gateway? I don't think this project would have been built at the time. I know that the county is discussing off-site mitigations, but that doesn't take care of what the problem is on-site. It really, truly isn't what I think the vision for Kings Beach or any area that has a gateway is supposed to be. So I just want to make sure that there's some caution during these community plan team meetings about what the different districts actually are going to be allowed to do, what a gateway means, what a neighborhood general means. We haven't really discussed in detail what the zoning tool is going to do or not do for each of these areas, and I'm happy to be a member of this team and represent the communities at large of Carnelian Bay and Tahoe Vista. Thank you.
Thank you, Ellie. Any other public comments on this at this time?
Not really public comment. Jennifer Merchant with the County Executive Office. Good morning, Chairwoman Montgomery. I just wanted to point out that there is a joint meeting scheduled currently between the Tahoe City Vision Group and the Tahoe City Community Plan Area Team appointed by the county. So they will be meeting on Monday evening at the Customs House. So that synthesis of the privately managed vision and the county-managed area plan is going to be occurring here in the next week or so, so just wanted to point that out.
And Jennifer, is that meeting open to the public?
You know, I'm not sure if it's a publicly noticed meeting. I think the interest was in getting the folks who had been working most in-depth on both sides together first to kind of come to agreements or to hear comments back and forth between the two teams. I don't think it's necessarily closed to the public-
Right.
-but it is in the conference room at the Customs House, so I think it's kind of a more detailed, hands-on, working type of meeting, and then they would be talking about more information to the public at the next town hall or community plan meeting. I think that's the plan. I just have it in my calendar, so I don't, I'm not-
Thank you, we appreciate that clarification.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on this item? All right, this is an information item only, we are not being requested to take any action. This was just a status update. So at this time, we will move to our ten fifteen item, County Clerk Recorder Elections. Ryan Ronco here today. Ryan, welcome.
Thank you very much. Good morning, everybody. We were, Ryan Ronco with the County Clerk Recorder Elections Office. We were looking to update our fee ordinance with you today, but we're still kicking the tires on this ordinance with the CEO's office. So all we're asking for you today is to continue the public hearing to a future date and time where we'll come back and wow you with our exciting fee ordinance.
I can't remember being wowed by an exciting fee ordinance, but I'll take your word for it.
Thank you.
Okay, any issues from the board in terms of continuing this item to a date uncertain?
Should we see the public here?
Do we need to take an action? Yeah, is there anyone from the public who showed up to comment on this particular agenda item? All right, seeing none. I think if the board does not object, we'll just agree to continue this to a date uncertain. I don't believe that takes that board to action. So Ryan, thank you very much for making the long drive, we appreciate it.
Good to see your hometown.
Yeah, welcome to my snowy world. All right, I'm going to dither around for about thirty seconds, and then we're going to move to our ten thirty timed item, which will be, excuse me, Community Development Resource Agency and Planning. This is the North Tahoe Area General Plan Amendment, Dollar Creek Shared Use Trail, and this will be yet another public hearing today. Paul Thompson and Alan Bruch presenting.
Chair, members of the board, Paul Thompson with Planning Services, along with Alan Bruch. Today, this item before your board today is a request to conduct a public hearing to consider a recommendation from the Placer County Planning Commission for approval of an amendment to the North Tahoe Area General Plan to create a special area, Special Area 1, and add transportation routes to, as a conditionally permitted use, to a few properties within the Plan Area Statement, Plan Area Statement 013. Also before you is a request to adopt a mitigated negative declaration for the project, which includes an ARADA and a mitigation monitoring and reporting program for the project. And lastly, number three, we're requesting that your board adopt a resolution amending the North Tahoe Area General Plan to create the Special Area 1 on the properties in question and add transportation routes as a conditionally allowed use to the Plan Area Statement. So with that, Alan Bruch is the planner that's going to make the presentation. So Alan.
Thank you, Paul. Yeah, Alan Bruch, the project planner for the Dollar Creek Shared Use Trail Project. This is a Department of Public Works project. I do have Peter Kratz, the deputy director, here to answer any questions that you may have, as well as the environmental consultant, who's Rob Burick, is here as well. This particular project is to establish a Class 1 shared-use trail, extending the existing Tahoe City PUD multi-use trail network system into other trail systems, including the North Tahoe Public Utility District. It's approximately 2.2-mile trail between the Dollar Hill Drive area as well as 711 up to Fulton Crescent, which is known as the Cedar Flat area. It is to utilize primarily public-owned lands, Dollar area, Firestone properties, and Conservancy in North Tahoe Public Utility District, and enhance non-motorized uses. Oops, just not moving. There you go. To get everyone oriented where it's located again, here's the Dollar Hill area. In red, this is the 2.2-mile section. It is a segment that is connecting the two PUDs together, as I mentioned, but because of funding and the environmental document, we did extend it all the way to Fulton Crescent at this location, and ultimately, there's going to be tie-ins to a future segment, and it is tied into existing trail systems as well, so there's constant planning on that. on that. There was unimproved areas along the red area. Through the environmental documents, we tried to minimize the number of trees being removed and utilizing the existing trail system that's there. This is to get the board oriented where the other trail systems are. This was also a key item that was brought up at the Planning Commission, how it was being tied in to the other trail system. So I just wanted to let the board know about that. This orientation, north is facing this way. This is the Fulton Crescent where it's tying into. And then it goes down into, as I mentioned, down to the other side, down towards 711 at Dollar Hill. Orientation, because there was some public comment from the neighbors around the Fulton Crescent Drive about tying into the street there. As you can see, there was an existing, there is an existing trail, and this is going to be a paved Class One multi-use trail system. So we are asking, as Paul mentioned, to adopt a Special Area Number One, which is in this area, is the Watson Creek area, and to add a transportation use. Staff believe it was an oversight that that particular use was not added to this area. So we are looking for an amendment today. So again, we're looking at adding the permissible land use to the Watson Creek area statement, Special Area Number One, to add transportation routes as a special use through a conditional use permit, and to approve the conditional use permit and adopt a mitigated negative declaration. And I'm here to answer any questions, as well as I do have other staff here available as well.
Thank you, Alan. Any questions, Jack, Jim, Robert? Okay, seeing none. Oh, Paul.
Clarification. The conditional use permit was already approved by the Planning Commission, so your board is not requesting, is not requested to approve that entitlement. So that's already been approved by the Planning Commission.
All right. Thank you for that clarification. All right, this is a public hearing, so I will now open the public hearing to consider the recommendation. If anyone is interested in commenting on this item, please come forward and identify yourself and make your
Ron Trebus, again, with the North Lake Tahoe Resort Association. I wanted to further support what Paul and Alan have said about this 2.2 mile trail and that we keep talking about trail system here and a trail system here, but for many years, the board supervisors have been supportive of and recommending that we have an entire Class One trail system that totally circumvents the, what we call the North Lake Tahoe Resort Triangle. And that goes down the west shore, across the north shore. It joins with the Marthas Valley, goes to Truckee, comes across and then back down the Truckee River Corridor. And all of these elements are of this greater trail system. And this is a very important step. For about 23 years now, the North Lake Tahoe, or North Tahoe Public Utility District had been working on doing a link from Dollar Hill clear to the Tahoe Vista area and have been unable to do it. And through the strong efforts of the Department of Public Works, we have now started to do that portion of what is overall about 48 miles of Class One trails that we'll have in place. And so every one of these, these sections are missing links in that overall and very important. So we really encourage you and urge you to, to make this change so that we can continue with this Greater North Lake Tahoe Bike Trail System. Thank you.
Thank you, Ron. Any other comments on this item? Now is your opportunity. Please come forward.
Yeah. My name is Ed Jackson, and I represent a lot of the, at least in my mind, I represent a lot of the voters and the residents of the Carnelian Heights area. And we are very much opposed to this paved highway that we're going to be building through our forests. We already have very good trails and a number of trails that allow bikers and hikers and joggers and, and other people to use this area. And to run a paved road through the forest is just outlandish. We have tried to make our voices clear during this whole process, and I think we failed, we failed to be heard. I really think something like this ought to be brought up to the voters, not just made by the Planning Commission and special interest groups. It has to be discussed because it's, it changes the whole nature of the forest. A number of things that I haven't had good answers to is, how is it going to be maintained? We're not doing a good enough job maintaining the existing bike paths we have. We certainly aren't maintaining the roads, especially around the Fulton Crescent area. How are we going to provide safety to this road that we're building to nowhere through the forest? What about the environmental factors of paving another highway through the Dollar Creek area? I'm not prepared to make this statement, but I'm just making it off the top of my head. I really think before we move ahead with this, we need to get a real reading through voting from the Tahoe, North Tahoe Area residents and find out what they feel. And I don't think that's been adequately representative during the planning process or at any other time. And my name again is Ed Jackson. That's my comment. I could probably go further if I was more prepared, but I'm very concerned about this. And what happens to the neighborhood, the small, quiet neighborhood around Fulton Crescent where that road comes in? We saw a number that was thrown out, I think, by this commission of 35,000 people a year. So you're telling me in part of June, July, and August, we're going to have 35,000 people using that? Have we measured that figure and the validity of that figure versus, versus how many people today ride the part of the bike path from, from let's say the Coast Guard Station up to the top of Dollar Hill? You very seldom see bikes on that part of the hill, although you see bikes all over on the level parts of the trail. You're going to face a similar situation when you go up to Fulton Crescent. There's quite a, quite a height differential. So let's at least deal with realistic figures and numbers and not just throw out a 35,000 passenger trail in a, in a period of two and a half months. It just doesn't make sense.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
And I think the money could be used elsewhere. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Actually, I have a couple of questions, please, sir.
Yes, sir.
How do you believe that your voice hasn't been heard?
Well, I don't think it's ever been represented. And, and you're Jack Durin?
Yes, sir.
Yes, Jack. We have attended the meetings. Myself, my son, other neighbors have attended the meeting and are, the meetings have been structured in such a way that they're study groups where we don't really have time to sit down and, and communicate our feelings. We have written letters. I don't know if those letters, because I've seen a number of them, have gotten through. So I don't believe that has been heard.
Have you been provided an opportunity to comment during these meetings?
I have taken an opportunity to comment during these meetings, and some of my friends have taken it, but they were not encouraged.
Okay, and you mentioned.
And the, and the program was always kind of presented as a, take it or leave it, this is the way it's going to be.
You mentioned special interests. What special interests have you identified?
I know the special interests were not the residents of the area. The special interests were whomever was involved with, who's the gentleman, Peter, that was working on this project?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on this item? Please come forward.
Good morning. My name is Marina Marinco. I'm with Truckee Trails Foundation. We are in an advocacy group that advocates for trails, both paved and dirt, in the Truckee and Tahoe area. And I just want to say we throw our support to this project. I think there's a lack of Class One trails in the area and would like to see this, this project move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments on this? Paul?
I just want to mention that the applicant, Peter Kratz, from the Department of Public Works, is in the audience, and he may have a few comments that he might want to provide.
Peter, did you have anything to add?
Sure, real quickly, Chairwoman, members of the board, Peter Kratz, representing the applicant for the project. I'll just say that in terms of just hearing some of the public comments today, I've met Mr. Ed Jackson before. We've had a number, a series of meetings. We've responded to written comments in our environmental document, including his and others. I would say I've heard both sides on this, on this project, for and against for folks that live in the neighborhood. We, you know, we're tying it into the neighborhood to provide independent utility of this trail, knowing that the bigger picture, as others have pointed out today and as our document points out, is to connect one day to the regional park to the west. That is, that's the vision. The alignment here sets us up for that, and that's the direction we want to go. So in the meantime, in a piecemeal approach, this two-mile trail makes sense because it ties into the neighborhood. We've heard people say that, boy, that's great. That gives me a different way to get to, get around versus using my car. So with that, I'll leave it at that. In terms of, I think the outreach was, in terms of following CEQA and doing outreach for a project like this, we feel comfortable that we've done that and heard all voices. Thanks.
Peter, was there a participation by the neighbors?
A little bit. It's, it's, you know, oftentimes with these projects, we try to get, get the word out that we're having meetings. We try to have them at night, not during the day, so we can maximize folks getting there after work and things like that. So a bit of a mix. And we made it such that, you know, I would make a formal presentation and we would stick around and talk with folks one-on-one or in groups about their issues. And I think the overwhelming issue here is, as Ron pointed out, is that this bigger master plan, and as the Truckee Trails person pointed out, is that maximizing recreational use in the basin. We have a series of informal trails that are there right now that get used by the neighborhood. I understand the concern by people that live in the neighborhood that more people could be coming back there on public land, but these are public lands that were set aside exactly for this use, for recreational activities and for non-motorized transportation use. And we've mitigated this, this project in accordance with CEQA, so we feel comfortable with that.
Thank you, Peter.
Any other questions from the board? Peter, before you step in, there were a couple of issues raised that I just wanted to quickly ask, and you may not be the appropriate person. It may be Paul for this. Maintenance, has that question been addressed as part of the project proposal?
I'll give it, I'll give it a crack. It is, it's a good concern. It's pointed out in any project that we do, just like our Kings Beach project, how are we going to maintain it? And I think in the new world of the Tahoe Regional Plan, you know, projects that come forward like this, we will, we can't just wink our eye and say, yeah, we're going to maintain it. We're going to have to have a funding plan put together that shows we've got real money to do maintenance. And the numbers that I'm familiar with in the North Tahoe Public Utility District are about $10,000 per trail mile per year for maintenance. That's something that's still out there. As you know, with all these projects, we have to go through the planning and the environmental process first before we can find the funds to build the project and look how we are going to maintain it. So, you know, right now, we're at that phase where we hope to get your approvals today to start cobbling together construction funds and figuring out a way how we will do the maintenance. I know through the TOT funding is a potential source, but there's other, other places we need to look to too for, for these types of amenities. So right now, we don't have a secured source, but right now, we don't have secured sources for construction either at this point in time.
The issue was raised of taking, and this is probably not a question for you, this is probably a question for Jerry Carden, our county council, about, you know, taking this to a vote. Have we ever taken a trails project like this to a vote? And how would we determine to whom that vote would go?
Not, not that I'm aware of.
You're probably not the right person for that. I guess I'd ask Jerry that question.
It's somewhat inconsistent with the representative former governor that we have, where elected representatives make those decisions on behalf of the public.
Yeah, and that was kind of my take on it. I mean, I, I hear occasionally from people that we should be able to vote on all these different projects, and frankly, it would bankrupt the county to put on that many votes. And historically, the process is through representational government rather than taking it to a direct vote of members of the public, because how do we define that? It's a regional trail. It's a county asset. Does that mean everyone in the county gets to vote on it, or only the people in the immediate neighborhood? So just really wanted to just talk through that proposal a little bit, because it does come up, not infrequently, that projects that the county and others are moving forward should be voted upon. And it creates, I think, more problems than it would potentially solve. Alan, did you want to add to that?
Yeah, real quick, it ties into the Regional Plan Update, as well as what the county's doing, our Community Plan Updates. That's a huge section in our document that we'll look at, these long-range plans for trails. And eventually, those, those ideas and concepts with, through public input, will be coming back to the board, these key areas. So there will be a system in place for something like that, where a lot of public input and visioning and where these will be for voting too. So I just want to emphasize that as well.
Thank you. I also wanted to comment that this has, you know, in just over the three and a half years that I've been on the board, has come to the NITRAC at least twice that, that I can remember. So there has been opportunity for the public to show up, comment pro and con on this. And I have heard comments both for and against the project. So I think everyone's voice has been part of the project and has been heard. And those are all my comments. So this is a public hearing. If anyone would like to make a comment, now is your opportunity before I close that public hearing. Yep, come on forward.
Ron Trebus, and I just wanted to speak directly to the voting issue on this, as that this particular issue was addressed very thoroughly in the renewal campaign for the TOT measure, both in the voter survey, which we conducted, and in the actual vote. We had an 86% of Eastern Placer County residents or voters that voted for that TOT, and the highest priority was the completion of the bike trail system and the maintenance of that. That fund should be used to get those bike trails completed. And I feel that 86% was a fairly substantial percentage that approved that with, with those comments as the, of the bike trail system being a highest priority.
Thank you. All right, we are in the middle of conducting a public hearing on the Dollar Creek Shared Use Trail. If there are any members of the public who would like to comment on this item, either pro or con, now is your opportunity to come forward. Please introduce yourself.
Hello. Good morning.
Good morning. Great place to have a meeting. My name is Janet Gregor, and I typed up
something because it's easier for me to read. This is my neighbor.
Hi, my name is Dick Manfield.
We both live up in the, I call it the old county neighborhood. So I'm just going to start, but I've been a Tahoe resident since 1987, and I've lived at 3960 Beaumont Road since 1995. When I first moved here, I managed a small motel in Carnelian Bay. And one of the first public meetings I attended was about a proposed bike trail from Dollar Point to Tahoe Vista. Many people were against it, and the issue was shelved. That was 25 years ago. Today, the proposed bike trail would end two blocks from my house. I can't tell you how exciting that is. My husband, Steve, and I, that's Dick, my husband, Steve and I, use our trail system three to four days a week. A lot of our neighbors access that trail to get to the Nordic Center, Dollar Hill, and beyond. Providing a non-motorized route from our neighborhood towards Tahoe City is exactly what we need, and the future hope of it extending to Tahoe Vista is nothing short of outstanding. At AmericanTrails.org, there's hundreds of studies and raw data that demonstrate parks, greenways, and trails increase nearby property values, thus increasing local tax revenues. Such increased revenues often offset greenway acquisition costs or, in this case, construction and maintenance costs, maintenance costs. Furthermore, according to the National Association of Home Builders, trails consistently remain the number one community sought by amenity, sought by prospective homeowners. By building this bike trail extension, our community would benefit by having a safer route for bicyclists, pedestrians, and children. It'd also be healthier for us, because having a bike trail in close proximity would motivate the general public to get out and get some exercise. According to the Economic Impact of Investments in Bicycle Facilities, a case study of the North Carolina Northern Outer Banks, investment in bicycle facilities improves the transportation system for all users and also benefits health and fitness, quality of life, and the environment. If we can ultimately connect Kings Beach with Tahoe City, the west shore, and Squaw Valley, we'd have an epic bike trail. we'd have an epic bike trail. There are miles of trails throughout California. Extending an existing trail system in Tahoe is a natural progression that we should be following. We need to provide a trail system for our tourists, commuters, communities. Please, please, vote to approve this amendment, allow this project to move forward. And I'll tell you, I'm so glad I made it, because that was, no, it wasn't easy. So, go ahead, Dick.
Hi, I would just like to reiterate what Janet said. I live on Fulton Crescent, a couple houses down from where this trail will end, and I just can't speak enough about how necessary it is, how utilized it will be, not just by me, but I think by everybody in the neighborhood. It'll really be an asset to not just our neighborhood, but the community at large. And just to give you an idea of what a trail supporter I am, I donate to Rails to Trails Foundation and believe in the benefits and love to see it happen. Thank you.
Thanks, Janet. Thank you, Dick. Any other comments on this item? This is a public hearing, this is your opportunity. All right, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing on this. We are being asked to take three separate actions on this, and Jerry Carden, our County Council, suggests that we do take them separately. The first was to hold a public hearing, which we've done, and consider the recommendation for adding transportation route as a conditionally permitted land use on two properties. Jerry, do we need to take a specific action on the recommendation from the Board?
Well, that action will be in number three.
Okay, excellent. Then I'll bring it back to the Board for any additional questions or concerns. All right, seeing none, we would take then items two and three separately on this, if we don't mind. What's the pleasure of the Board?
Move to adopt the mitigation, including a RADA and adopt the mitigation monitoring program prepared for the Dollar Creek Shared Use Trail Project.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? All right, item three.
Move to adopt a resolution amending the North Tahoe Area General Plan to create Special Area One on assessors parcel number 092-010-035 and 092-010-023, and add transportation routes as a conditionally allowed land use to a portion of the plan area statement 013, Watson Creek.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion's carry. Thank you very much. Thank you, everyone, for coming, and I'm glad you made it just in time. Winter, it's great. It's here, apparently. All right, at this time, we'll move to our departmental item, number 6C, Tahoe Regional Planning Agency Regional Plan Update. Paul Thompson and Steve Buena presenting.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Paul Thompson again from Planning Services. This is the second presentation we'll make on the Tahoe Basin Regional Plan Update, and here today is Steve Buena to make that presentation.
Thank you. Steve, welcome.
Thank you. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Since the previous update to your Board in July, TRPA did release the agreement that came out of the by-state consultation meetings that we discussed at your previous Board meeting. This agreement was reached by the Natural Resource Agencies of both California and Nevada, and was a resolution to the non-unanimous issues or topics that came out of the Regional Plan Update Committee meetings, which was a subcommittee of the Governing Board convened to reach compromise on a variety of topics which may have the potential to be controversial. The by-state recommendation addressed a number of topics, including a reduction of the maximum size of a project that could be delegated to local jurisdictions as part of the area plan process. Also included in this by-state agreement was specific language to address the appeal process, which would be part of the area plan process. It also addressed commodities, tourist accommodation, unit transfer policy, site-specific transfer ratios, and a number of other items. When this by-state agreement was presented to the public by TRPA, it was explained that for all intents and purposes, this agreement was an all-or-nothing agreement. There was concern expressed to members of the public and the local jurisdictions that taking components of this agreement away may unravel the fabric of the agreement. The general sentiment of those that participated in the by-state consultation agreement was that this was not a perfect agreement, but it was a fair compromise that all parties could agree to in an effort to move forward and stay on track for final plan adoption in December. After the release of the by-state agreement, county staff participated in a number of meetings, including the three Regional Plan Update Committee meetings, where this agreement was ultimately endorsed to be brought forward to the Governing Board. There was also a technical working group, and this meeting was to make sure that the draft code and ultimately the final code would contain the appropriate language to reflect what was agreed upon in the by-state agreement. Also, as part of the appeal process, there was some concern about consistency with SEQA and the county codes of the local jurisdiction, so there was a meeting of the legal councils for the jurisdictions surrounding the basin, as well as a number of different internal meetings amongst county staff to make sure that all departments were adequately reflected and that we were staying consistent with the direction that we've previously received from your Board. So, with that, moving forward, TRPA is planning to release the final environmental impact statement, regional plan update, regional transportation plan, and code at the TRPA Governing Board meetings, which are scheduled for tomorrow and the following day. It's also anticipated that there will be two meetings in November, November 14th and 15th, moving forward to final plan adoption, which is anticipated for December 12th, 2012. County staff intends to attend all of the Governing Board meetings. We will also, once the plan's released, quickly start reviewing that and identifying which items have been addressed based on our prior comments. We also anticipate returning to your Board for a direction on anything that either wasn't identified or that we may need clarification for at your December Board meeting. So, with all that, I'd be happy to answer any questions, should you have any.
Any questions from the Board? Sorry about that. Steve, I did have a couple of questions. There were a few issues that Steve Caston and I have been trying to work on with the TRPA over the years. One relates to some of the use, allowable uses within the 89 corridor between Tahoe City and Alpine Meadows, that portion that TRPA controls in the 89 corridor. And the county has been, over the years, not just me, but from many supervisors back into history, has been trying to get the TRPA to allow the uses that the county allows with some of those businesses in the corridor. Have we made any progress on that, or do we still find ourselves in the same place we did 15 years ago?
We'll know for certain when the final plan comes out, and we'll take a look at that. But those comments were brought forward at the Regional Plan Update Committee meetings about the concern about, TRPA had used the non-conforming use as a goal to try to transfer development out of those areas, and, you know, for all intents and purposes, it wasn't an effective tool for doing that. So, we did provide comments on that, and it'll be interesting to see how that's addressed in the final plan.
Okay. And then there were also some, I would say, some sort of general county concerns about the golf course area not being included within the Tahoe City Community Plan area. Any idea what direction that is going?
That was actually one of the items in the by-state agreement, that it was, I think, TRPA intended to address that concern as part of, and I forget the terminology, but for one of the areas that they brought into the by-state agreement, but they kind of missed the mark, so they removed that provision from there. So, again, we'll take a look at the final plan and see how that's addressed.
Okay. We have in the audience today as well Jennifer Merchant, who sits on APC. Jennifer, was there anything that you wanted to add to this as, from your perspective as an APC member, since this is an update?
Sure. The upcoming meetings this week, tomorrow, as well as in November, will be joint APC Governing Board meetings. So, Steve and I, who both represent the county, Steve is the Planning Director Appointee, and myself as the Board of Supervisors Appointee, will be participating in those meetings. And because we don't have specific action on the final environmental document, we will provide comments that are consistent with the comments that your Board has provided to us already during those meetings. When we have a chance to come back to your Board with some recommendations based on our review, we do work with the team of staff in reviewing the environmental document. We'll come back to your Board, I believe. We're hoping to come back on December 11th, which is the day before the final TRPA action scheduled on the Regional Plan Update. We'll also be working with your Board's Appointee to the Governing Board, Larry Severson, so that we can ensure that we have a consistent Placer County message coming forward. And then I did want to mention too, on the golf course inclusion in the by-state consultation discussion, that was proposed to be included as a stream area plan, which would have downgraded forever unless the plan was amended in the future, the potential for development on the golf course. Most of it is a stream environment zone. I think all but maybe three acres of the 45-acre parcel are stream environment zones, so those would never be developed anyway. But there is some development potential on the small portion where the clubhouse is located right now, and I think that there are a lot of folks in the community, especially the Resort Association, who recommended county funding for that parcel, that it does have some development potential and ability to improve the economy in the Tahoe City area. So, that was part of our interest in that purchase. So, we would want to make sure that that work was included in the community plan, because as it stands right now, they took out the stream area plan designation and have kind of just stayed mute on that point. But we will need to include that in the community plan, should your Board desire, and then go back to TRPA when the community plan process is complete, and ask for them to make a finding of conformity with their regional plan. It's not conforming right now. Well, it is right now, but it wouldn't be if we requested for it to be included, so that's going to be an interesting turn of events, but we will be working on that over the next couple of years. So, I hope that answers all your questions.
It does. Since these are going to be joint APC Governing Board meetings, while I'm not the Appointee to the Governing Board, as the local elected, I do want to encourage you and Larry to really focus on the 89 corridor issues, if possible. You and I have talked about those in the past. Also, wanted to just put in my two cents that I hear substantive and overwhelming community support for a height limit of two stories on the lakeside for development, and I think that's probably a really solid proposal for Placer County. Can't speak for Douglas County, or, you know, any of the other jurisdictions, but I think, given the development that we've seen within Placer County, I think that's probably a really good suggestion. And really, best of luck moving forward with all of that.
Thank you. We're going to need it. And specifically on the Highway 89 corridor, TRPA had recommended actually a further downzone of those properties from recreation where they are right now to conservation. So, that definitely is on our list of things that your Board has provided direction to us as staff before to include in our comments, and we will be bringing that up again. I don't expect to see a change in the environmental document, and that may be part of the next community plan process, and getting that included in the Tahoe City Community Plan at a higher potential for development. And what we're hearing from that Tahoe City team is that there be at least a commercial development allowed on the corridor, so that those properties can be sustainable in the future. Currently, they can only do, I think it's propane and ice.
Yes.
Which I don't think there's a whole lot of future in either one of those.
Agreed. And I think it's also important in, when you make those comments to the APC and the Governing Board generally, to just remind them that frankly, those properties have no impact on the, they cannot be seen from the lake, nor does any drop of water actually flow to the lake from any of those properties.
They are outside of the Tahoe Basin watershed. You're correct.
Absolutely. And in fact, their inclusion in the TRPA area of influence remains a mystery to me.
Maybe we can approach that in the next Regional Plan Update.
Yeah. God willing. Thank you, Jennifer. Any other comments or questions from the Board? Any member of the public wish to comment on this? This is information item only, we're not being asked to take any action today. All right, seeing none, thank you very much for the presentation, much appreciated. Paul, Steve, Jennifer, and Edmund. All right, we will now move to Department Poll, item seven, County Executive Economic Development, Agreements Tahoe City Downtown Association and North Tahoe Business Association. David Snyder presenting.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Honorable Members of the Board. Today, we have two items, two actions requested. The first is to adopt two resolutions authorizing service agreements and the execution thereof with our Tahoe City Downtown Association in the amount of $65,000, and also the North Lake Tahoe Business Association in the amount of $70,000 for this current fiscal year. And also to approve a budget revision in the amount of $135,000 to increase revenue and expenditures to fund those contracts. I have with me today both executive directors, Steve Hoak with the Tahoe City Downtown Association, and also Joey Doyle of the North Tahoe Business Association, who have just passed their one-year anniversaries. So, congratulations to them. Quickly, by way of background, the primary mission of the Tahoe City Downtown Association has been to enhance and promote a vibrant and prosperous commercial core for the residents and also visitors to Tahoe City. TCDA's programs, events, and activities are designed really to rejuvenate the downtown corridor through new and repeat visitation. In the past year, they have continued implementation of the Main Street program model with daily outreach to local businesses, owners, and managers, and staff regarding TCDA events and activities, including the highly successful concerts at Commons Beach, Pacific Fine Arts Festival, farmers' markets, and Heritage Plaza Music Series. In the upcoming year, TCDA will focus on continued liaison between business and property owners and Placer County, outreach to new membership prospects, as well as continued participation and input into the TRPA Regional Plan Update process. For the North Tahoe Business Association, they were originally established to provide support for local business marketing, and they've really expanded that role. They now work closely with the Resort Association, other organizations, the County of Placer to develop and implement events and activities that promote the social and economic well-being of their territory. In the past year, the association has organized and assisted at many special events, including the Bay-to-Bay Community Cleanup Day, Friday evenings, summer music at the beach, as well as the annual Snow Fest 10-day winter carnival, which feels like it's here, Passport to Dining, and of course, the annual fireworks celebration. So, in the upcoming year, NTBA will continue to support the implementation of the Main Street program model as well, work towards establishing the Kings Beach Benefit Assessment District, and that's the additional $5,000 piece is associated with the contract with NBS, and a little bit of additional work to get that assessment district squared away, and of course, to support the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. So, with that, I recommend adopting... So with that, I recommend adopting both resolutions before you this morning, as well as the budget revision.
Any questions from the board? David, I did have a question. Item two says that, and I just want a clarification on this, that funds will be utilizing both Department of Public Works and transient occupancy tax funds. What is the percentage of the dollar amount from each of those different pots?
Well, the vast majority is TOT. Public Works has a small portion associated, again, with the Business Assessment District.
And that's $5,000, you said?
$5,000.
So $5,000 from DPW and $130 from TOT?
Right. Well, do you guys want to clarify? Jennifer could probably clarify. $115 from TOT.
Okay. So $115 from TOT and 20 from DPW?
No.
We're being asked for 135? I'm sorry. I just...
That's okay. It's good to square it.
Yeah, I'll help clarify.
Thank you.
The origination of all of the funds are actually TOT. The $5,000 from the Department of Public Works was allocated initially by your board toward the Kings Beach Commercial Core project. It is being reallocated from DPW to the North Tahoe Business Association. The $115,000 is coming out of this fiscal year's TOT funds, 12/13, and an additional $10,000, I think that's where we are now, 135, is from reserve from funds unspent from last year's TOT funds. So that's how those add up to each other, and I think I've got the right number. So that's a total 15 plus 5 plus 100 and...
Okay.
Something like that. I'm sorry.
13 and 5.
Really close.
Thank you. 15, 115, and 5.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Correct.
Thank you. I appreciate that clarification. All right, any other questions from the board on this? Any questions? Or Dave, I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, you didn't.
All right. I will open this up to the public for any questions or comments on this. I see representatives from both business associations and the Resort Association here. Any questions? Comments? Now's your chance. All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
Second.
All right, this will be a roll call. We have a motion and a second.
Wiegand?
Yes.
Duran?
Yes.
Holmes?
Yes.
Montgomery?
Yes. Thank you very much. All right, we will move to item nine, having already completed item eight. Public Works, Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project, property acquisition, California Department of Parks and Recreation. Peter Kratz presenting.
Good morning, Chairwoman, members of the board. Peter Kratz again for the record with Public Works here on these two items, 9A and 9B. I'll present them together, if that's okay, because they are related. These two items relate to property acquisitions requested for board approval on two state properties, including 9A, the California Department of Parks and Recreation, in the amount of $421,749, and 9B relates to California Department of Boating and Waterways in the amount of $125,725. For item 9A, the Department of Parks and Recreation that owns eight parcels on the south side of Highway 28 that make up the Kings Beach State Recreation Area, we are asking your board for adopting a resolution approving these agreements across some or all of the parcels, and they are three agreements. Number one, a grant of easement for a public road easement totaling 4,037 square feet. Number two, a grant of easement for drainage facilities totaling 24,409 square feet. And number three, a right-of-entry permit for a temporary construction easement totaling 23,970 square feet. The needed easement rights and right-of-entry permit will accommodate the proposed roundabout at Bear Street and Highway 28 and the drainage improvements along the south side of Highway 28 affiliated with the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. For item 9B, the Department of Boating and Waterways that owns two parcels on the south side of Highway 28 adjacent to Lake Tahoe, we are asking your board for adopting a resolution approving an agreement and grant of permanent drainage easement acrossing the two, crossing two parcels, excuse me, totaling 7,494 square feet. The needed easement rights with item 9B will accommodate drainage improvements along the south side of Highway 28, also affiliated with the Kings Beach Commercial Core Improvement Project. The agreed-upon cost for the easement, excuse me, with boating and waterways of 9B equals $125,725, considerably less than the fair market value of $184,000 due to the acknowledgement of the proposed improvements to be installed. And I'll back up on my presentation on 9A, the agreed-upon cost for the easements and permit equals the fair market value of $421,749, based on recent appraisals done on both state properties. The requested actions today for both items, 9A and 9B, represent a continuation of our right-of-way acquisition efforts for the project using dedicated federal funding provided by the Southern Nevada Public Lands Management Act, otherwise known as SNPLMA. The project has been approved as a multi-agency environmental document to satisfy federal, state, county, and TRPA environmental requirements. There will be no net county cost in acquisition. The acquisition is fully supported by federal SNPLMA funding and programmed in this year's department's fiscal year budget. In conclusion, we respectfully request that both these items be approved as written, 9A 1 and 2, and 9B 1 and 2. And here to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Any questions from the board? Seeing none, any questions or comments from the audience on these items? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the board. What's the pleasure of the board?
We get approval of item 9A 1 and 2, and item 9B 1 and 2.
Okay. County council suggests that we take 9A and then 9B.
Great.
So that was 9A. A motion and a second on 9A. All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? What's the board's pleasure on 9B?
We've approved 9B 1 and 2.
Second.
All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motions both carry. Thank you very much, Peter.
Thank you.
We show departmental item 10, county council, closed session. We do not have any closed session items to be heard today, so we will not be going into closed session, nor will we be providing a report on it. Having completed all agendized items on today's agenda, we stand adjourned.